It's Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty five. It's nine oh four AM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier and Commissioner Caroline Mahia virtually. Commissioner Grant is at Transportation Policy Board will be joining hopefully later in the morning. And then Commissioner Claus is also double booked and at a meeting in another part of town for Clean Air Agency. So we have this meeting recorded, posted to the Thurston County YouTube channel within twenty four hours. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. This is our normal Tuesday session that we put over till Wednesday because of the holiday yesterday. So we are looking at recap of this afternoon's
Yep.
business agenda and then a few miscellaneous items.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair. Good morning. Happy Wednesday. We'll be recording today's meeting on Zoom as well as testing the livestream equipment throughout the day. We're hoping to be back online with the livestream on Tuesday next week, and we're working towards a plan to automate much of the production, the future due to staff reductions for to our communications team. Just a quick update on that, that appreciate the team making progress on those efforts and hopefully by next week we'll be up and rolling again.
Okay, that's a good update. So let's look at first up is the review of this afternoon's business meeting agenda. We have pledge allegiance to be led by me, land acknowledgement, approval of agenda, three consent proclamations. Madam Clerk.
Yes, and just to clarify, this is the second review of today's agenda. So there are some highlighted items that we'll touch on. To start with the proclamations today, we would like to swap the order in which the proclamations are addressed just due to the photo for the Veterans Day and Military Family Appreciation Month. So Kim Burnett, who will be facilitating the proclamations this afternoon, will introduce Adoption Day first, followed by Veterans Day and Military Family Appreciation Month.
Can you explain about we're stopping to do a picture for that group?
Yes, for Veterans Day and Military Family Appreciation Month, the Board last week asked to take a photo in front of the dais.
Yeah, let me just a quick one right here.
Yep, okay. Do we need to amend the mo- the agenda when we?
Uh, we can. I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, Kim's prepared just to work the order a little bit differently.
Okay. Yeah, any questions on proclamations? All right. And then what else did we need to look at?
Consent item two was added. That is the twenty twenty six officers for the Board, for Chair and Vice Chair.
All right, straightforward.
Consent items twelve and thirteen were added after the Board's discussion last week on advisory boards. So one is an appointment to the Agriculture Advisory Committee, and one is an appointment to the Housing Authority of Thurston County's Board of Commissioners.
Yep, I remember those. And we've got public hearings, so a lot.
There are four public hearings this afternoon. There has been a couple of changes to highlight on public hearing number four, which is for the Permit Review Process Annual Code Update. First, just to touch on the ordinance itself, where the whereas section eighteen has been updated to reflect the correct hearing date of today, November twelfth, and the corrected version will be posted online as well. The motions for this public hearing have also been updated. There is a third motion that includes the full package minus the appeal process. So last week there was a request to sort of
All right, I see.
pull out those items.
So the the second motion would be approving the whole thing.
The full package.
Including the appeal issue, and then if we wanted to go forward with everything but that, that's number three.
Correct.
Okay.
Or to the options that the Board discussed.
Okay, makes that clear, Vice Chair?
Nope.
Okay, so
Here's my.
Item two, like if 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 the Board decided to move forward with all this stuff except the permit, the review of your quasi judicial appeals, then that would be option, that would be the third where it says optional. If we want to approve it all, that's number two.
Yeah.
But if we decide not to move forward right yet on the that other one, then you've got an optional motion, number three.
Okay.
To use instead of two. So that's just something we can discuss at the public hearing. Okay, questions? Nope. Okay, so that's let me just let me just tick through those for our own reminder and public reminder. The item public hearing number one is on the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report of the Caper. That's usually a straightforward item for public health regarding housing. Item two is the Martin Way Land Use Amendment and Rezone, and number three is a Black Lake Corey Rezone. So those are our two rezone proposals for this year. So those will be, we've had work sessions on those, and those will be interesting to hear public comment. And then the fourth item is a pa- is a package of process issues, some of them really simple, and then something, some of them more complicated like the the Board's review of land use appeals. So that'll be good. That starts at three thirty. I'm anticipating that that will happen on time based on this agenda. I don't see why it would not happen at three thirty, but we'll go in in that order. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep, so that makes sense to me. And so if there's no other questions, we'll move on to item two, which is twenty twenty five Thurston County Emergency Medical Services Comprehensive Plan.
Ben here with us. Thank you so much, Ben.
Good morning, Commissioners. You were given an e-briefing on this just about a week, week and a half ago. That e-briefing included the comprehensive plan, the edits, the comprehensive plan, as well as a community presentation. I won't be going into detail with this community presentation. This is just meant to be a high overview and answer any questions that you might have. But it did want to call out the partnership and collaboration that we did that we did have throughout the process. Within that briefing, I indicated that this has been a two and a half year process that I'll call a labor of love as we've looked to coordinate with our partners throughout the community and really get some feedback into from the EMS community, get some feedback into what is the blueprint moving forward. A comprehensive plan, and not to educate too terribly much, but is intended to give an overall direction for a twenty year plan. How are we, what are the questions we want to answer? What are the possibilities for growth? What are some of the concerns that we see as we see in population growth throughout the the county? What does it look like when our demographics change? How do we continue to support the community as it continues to grow? A large portion of this was actually tied into how we decided where the location of the eighth medic unit would be. A large portion of this was tied, has been tied into how we look at augmenting or alternative funding measures, whether it's associated with grants or other possibilities to help make the funds further more sustainable and more responsible for the continuation of EMS services in Thurston County. The collaborative approach did include presentations from Providence Health System or Providence Southwest from MultiCare, which includes a standalone ED that's in Emergency Department that's in Lacey, as well as their main campus within the county, Capital Medical Center. We also did hear from Olympic Ambulance in terms of their healthcare at home models that they're looking at and also discharging from Providence a little bit earlier out of stays back out to the home and the support that our private carriers provide to those patients that now can recover within the comfort of their own home. Additionally, the last one that we heard from was Salson Behavioral Hospital as we look at all the constraints associated associated with the health behavior, behavioral and mental health capacity, not only in Thurston County, but within the state of Washington. The state of Washington is consistently ranked one of the lowest in the nation, usually sitting around forty five to fifty by CDC Review in terms of the per capita behavioral health and mental health bed availability. But we're also in the top five consistently for need. So per capita need for behavioral health and mental health capacity. That's created a backlog within our ERs, within our ER departments and other care facilities that are struggling to find the best way to support our community, and that's been an ongoing struggle. So the comprehensive plan looks holistically at what what Thurston County has experienced from the past and looks to project into the future. This is reviewed every five years, and after the pandemic, we needed a solid review over this process. Healthcare's changed. Healthcare's evolved. That's a large part of this community presentation that did go out and where we find ourselves today. So that's really the framework that we're working with. We did do an overhaul on this. Our previous plan was almost forty pages long, and I like to point out you usually don't start a comprehensive plan with a preposition, propositional phrase that starts with in nineteen seventy four. That doesn't look forward. It's immediately looking backwards. And that's not to say that the work that was done that we're building on as we go through this process hasn't been building on an excellent system. But medicine evolves, and this plan is intended to be going from forty pages to the nine pages that were handed to you. Those nine pages, excuse me, eleven pages, nine of substance, the cover page, the executive summary don't count in that process. And so it was intended to be, how do we make this digestible for the community as well? How do we make ten value statements that are meaningful not only to EMS, but to the community in general? That help inform our process moving forward. With that, we went through the two and a half year process. We partnered with our partners to hear what their initiatives are, what their comprehensive plan is, what their strategic plans are. We took all those pieces, reformatted this into the eleven page document that you have in front of you, and we came up with the ten value statements that were indicated. I'm not going to flip through each and every one of these slides. However, I do want to at least walk through the ten value statements as they're written. We want to continue to provide excellent evidence-based patient care as a primary value statement within the system. Our patients come first. It needs to be the center of everything that we do. If it's counter that statement, it's important that we work, well, it won't be counter that statement. Everything that we do will be in the interest of the patient, and that should be the direction of the EMS Council. We want to support healthcare agencies in efficient and cost-effective healthcare delivery. Maintain and improve multidisciplinary and multi-agency collaborative approaches to healthcare. Investigate low-impact funding alternatives. Preserve and improve community awareness, prevention, and engagement initiatives. Evaluate a sustainable and system-wide organizational and operational structure. Preserve and augment local, regional, and statewide healthcare community engagement. Manage EMS impacts related to population growth, which is a significant issue within Thurston County. Our population growth is actually the lowest impact of all the different components that are associated with our demographic. Our demographic change is actually the greatest impact within our county. Improve training and medical oversight of Thurston County EMS workforce and support recruitment and retention of Thurston County prehospital providers. With that, there's a couple paragraphs associated with this within the comprehensive plan. And this was reviewed by the EMS Council, then brought back out to community presentations involved with the Fire Chiefs Association, the Fire Commissioners Association, EMS Council and Operations. It was then supported by EMS Council after its revision. Commissioner Fornier had the pleasure of reviewing it and modifying a couple of the the areas of the of the plan, which were
Thank you for humoring me.
Fantastic. What's that?
Said, thank you for humoring me.
Absolutely. It wasn't humoring. It was
Yeah, no, I appreciated the 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 collaboration.
Yeah, and and we did too. And with that, this is the plan that we're putting in front of you for adoption. This has been supported and recommended to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption on December second. I'll stop there. See if you have any questions.
Just want to thank Ben and his team. The amount of community input engagement over a wide range of stakeholders, including taking time to invest in making sure our commissioner that sits on the council is up to date, is extremely appreciated. It's all the background work that it takes to put something like this with all the multifacets together and to have broad support. So thank you for your leadership, Ben.
I do, I know that you hear a lot of comprehensive plans. I think it's important to point out that Thurston twenty forty five, there are components of the strategic plan, or excuse me, the comprehensive plan for the county that aren't actually required by RCW. And so this is actually a call out on Thurston twenty four's website, the active website, or excuse me, Thurston twenty forty five's website, as this is a standalone component that EMS needs to be addressed from the county outside of Thurston twenty forty five. And so just wanted to make you aware of that. All right. There's no other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. You've you've gotten lots of my questions, so.
Thank you, Ben.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hold on, I have moves us to the biennial budget final review.
Chair, before the, I mean, before we jump to this item, there was a request that came through via, I think it was email last week from Commissioner Claus, and we mentioned it when we were going through agenda review. But it was a request to reorder some of the public hearings on today's agenda, and I'll let the clerk speak to the specifics.
Yeah, I believe the request was to hold the public hearings that have additional considerations for the Board this afternoon first, such as the Caper public hearing, item one, and item four, the Permit Review Process public hearing. Since she will have to depart from the meeting early for conflict.
Just wanted to make sure that if she, if the time she has available, that she could participate in those two.
I don't, I don't, I don't, my understanding of agendas is they're set twenty four hours in advance, and we can't like change them without without it being at the meeting.
Right, amending the agenda.
Well, once we publish it twenty four hours in advance.
But there's four, there's four public hearings set at three thirty. And it's up to, up to which ones we take, because they all, they aren't all, can it happen simultaneously?
No.
So I don't think we're changing the agenda, but the order is just
But the order was published. I mean, I, so like
But the order is the three, the 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 time is three thirty.
Sure, I guess. I I
I mean, I
It doesn't, I don't, it changes the public, no.
I mean, I, let, let, let's keep, let's keep going. I mean, that's one, one issue. We'll, we'll set that aside for a second. What, what is, I don't quite understand the argument for the court request.
Public hearing one.
Fourth instead of, put fourth second instead of fourth, because why?
Because they have, oh, sorry.
She has to leave at early from the meeting and wanted to try to be there for that conversation.
More than the planned use amendments?
Those public
Which seem to be the most important of the set.
Relaying her request is what you're doing.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that I mean, if you were going to leave, I'd put the two Landys first and put the other one second, or third and fourth. So I'm a little confused by that, but without her here to say, to say.
We just wanted to honor her request and make sure we called it out.
I'll touch base with Commissioner Klaus. I think we have latitude to, because they're all set at three thirty, you know? Like, that's my point to Commissioner Fournier. I think they're really stacked on top of each other. So I don't think we're, I don't think we're amending the agenda by taking one at three thirty versus the other at three thirty. I don't think they have to be listed in some order. That's my interpretation of the agenda, but
The easy answer would be when the agenda's passed.
Yeah.
Just say, that's, you know.
And is that, is that true though, that we can't, I mean, because we, I just asked about the, the, wasn't there something else I asked about?
Oh, it was proclamations.
Proclamations, yeah, we're switching the order of those, and you're saying we don't need to amend the agenda?
I, since they're consent proclamations, I don't believe there needs to be a motion to amend the agenda for that. And that we can certainly reach out to legal prior to this afternoon.
Yeah, but I think to your point, Chair, reach out to Commissioner Klaus and just chat it through with her. I think that there's a level of flexibility because they're all starting around three thirty. I mean, that's the posted time, and we're going to take them in a level of order. The chair has the prerogative, but we'll double check with not legal.
That sounds good. Commissioner Meehan?
Yeah, I was going to say that. I think it's up to the chair's prerogative. I, you know, before, you know, we would call out, like, if we had multiple public hearings, depending on, you know, people who were here, and then some hearings where there were no public hearing to come in, and we kind of would move that around depending on how much public testimony we're going to receive on some, so I don't just because they are all starting at the same time, so I'm not sure, and I think it would be good if Amy can check, and then if with legal, and then if Commissioner Meehan can have a conversation with Commissioner Klaus before our two P M hearing.
Okay, just the way that I treat them, and I don't, maybe it's something I made up in my head, but I don't think it is, is you have to have them, like, all agendas have to be noticed to the public twenty-four hours in advance so that they can have the opportunity to review them, plan their day, know what they're interested in, and the, the agenda can't be changed once it's published in that twenty-four hour period until the meeting starts, and it's an open public meeting, and the board takes formal action to change the agenda. But I, you know, I, I see the logic, and it just says three thirty, there will be public hearings. So.
All right, well, that's a good, it's probably a good thing to just, to just nail down with council, because like, for example, if, if there was a department item, and let's say, let's just say it was the auditor, and auditor hall couldn't, wasn't here in the room. Like, I would feel like I had the latitude to move on and go back to that item without, you know,
Yeah.
Just be out of convenience, and this to me falls into that same bucket, but I'd like to nail that down, so. All right. Okay, that takes care then of I said, we're moving now on to item three, which is the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five biennial budget amendment three final review.
Thank you, Chair. We'll hand over to Summer and Jennifer Smith. Can I take it away, Summer?
Good morning. Summer Miller, Budget Manager in the Commissioner's Office, and this is your twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget amendment three, second review, final review. It is the review in which the board will make your final preliminary decisions for public notice in the coming weeks, which we're hoping to actually get posted no later than eleven twenty. So we'll get started. Thank you. Okay, so today is your twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget amendment three preliminary to final decision review. Statute provides authority for the Board of County Commissioners to amend the county budget during the fiscal year. This includes the supplemental appropriations because of unanticipated receipt of federal, state, and local revenue sources, and for transfers or revisions within departments and offices. We request direction on what items to adopt, not to adopt, so that the final approvals may be combined and noticed to the public. Our timeline for amendment three is last week we did the first review and your preliminary, I guess, decision or book. Okay, it's November twelfth is our second review and final preliminary decisions. We'd like to get our public noticing out no later than November twentieth and the week of November twenty-sixth for adoption of the amendment three by resolution on December second. This budget amendment is noticed, but the public hearing is not necessary unless there is a capital budget change that requires an amendment to the CIP, which this does not. So we're going to go kind of quickly through the next several slides because they have not changed from the last presentation. This is the roll-up of your maintenance and policy requests, summaries by fund, general fund, all other funds. It shows you the total revenues and twenty twenty-five expenditures, both general fund, all other funds, and total. This is our maintenance request summary, general fund for the board, and it shows the recommended to adopt requests that were submitted. Again, policy requests, general fund, operating, recommended to adopt, no changes from your last presentation. This is all other funds, maintenance requests, recommended to adopt, no changes from your last presentation. Again, we're moving forward to all other funds, policy requests, no changes. Here is a roll-up of your capital request submissions for maintenance, policy, and then the reappropriation. This is the summary that we put together for recommended to adopt, no changes from your last presentation. My apologies, I'm not sure how my email address got imposed on there, but those figures are negative three seventy-four, two two seven in both revenue and expenditure columns. I just noticed that when we loaded this not too long ago. Okay, so this is where the fun begins. So on slide eleven, we have the list of operating errata changes for your consideration. I would like to notate that these are budget system entry errors that needed to be cleaned up in the report display. There are no system changes needed on our side, so it doesn't change the overall revenue or expenditures as they were entered. It's broken down into blue lines to show you that those are actually six separate lines with the detail broken out for you. That's on the left-hand side. On the far right-hand side, there is a column that says notes, and it references back which prior recommendation slide or sheet you have where that is captured and the particular line on that sheet, just for ease of cross-referencing. Nothing substantial here, just to clean it up in the way the information is displayed. The next slide is the capital errata. Again, these are data entry changes to correct system errors. The first line is a correction to the capital request that referenced twenty twenty-four debt for our courthouse bond or our new plum screen facility payment. That's actually a twenty twenty-two bond. And we have captured the correct bond number and the year in that particular line. Everything below the second orange line or yellow line are corrections that were entered. These are items that were entered into the budget system that were deleted prior to the first review with the board, but the system somehow did not release those deletions and still captured them on your reports. So nothing of substance here other than they need to be removed. And then that brings us to our next step. So this was your second review and final preliminary decision time. We would like you to confirm direction on your operating maintenance requests, the operating policy requests, the capital requests, and the errata items as they were presented to you today. We would like to let you know we'll be noticing the public on our intent to amend the budget, and that there will be an adoption of amendment by resolution on December second, and no changes between today's decisions in that particular case. And I would like you to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
So at the last, at the first review, I was not able to attend the meeting. I was I looked at the paperwork and had, you know, read the things that were submitted. I guess I would just look to Vice. Was there, was there board discussion that I missed on any topic of substance?
Nothing of substance.
Okay.
There was a request from Commissioner Grant for Summer to look at some of the numbers that were off. Summer did that and made sure that they were, some of the totals
Were matched up.
Matched up, but that was the only thing that was flagged.
Okay. Commissioner, we hear anything?
No, sir. I think that it was covered pretty well. There was really no discussion besides that point that the county manager brought up.
Okay, so what do you need from us this morning?
We would like you to give us approval to move forward with finalizing the amendment at Thurston.
Do we need a motion then?
I think we normally do a thumbs up on this.
Yep, and then it'll come to the board on the second.
We'll make actual, actually, okay, thumbs up from the board to move these in the direction on the operating maintenance requests, policy requests, capital requests, and errata items.
I'm, I'm in favor.
You have my virtual thumbs up.
All right, we got three thumbs, and that's three out of three.
Thank you.
Summer, invite your team, those to all the staff and our, our partners for the board.
Okay. Next up is a closed session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one forty-two, subsection two. That portion of a meeting or of a quasi-judicial body which relates to a quasi-judicial matter between named parties. Specifically, appeal of a hearing examiner decision, Johnson Creek Mine Expansion, approximately fifteen minutes.
We can start there, yes.
We'll expand if that's required, but right now it is nine thirty-three, and we'll be in a closed session until
We're out of the closed session and there's no, there was no board action to be taken. So we're up to commissioner items and I've been handed the letters. Is this a commissioner item?
It is, yes.
Madam Clerk, tell us what we've got here.
This is the joint letter regarding the court impact fees. It has been routed through Superior Court, the Board, and now through AOC. AOC provided just a couple of minor revisions to the letter, so we would like to bring this back to you. A clean final version. The revisions were made in paragraph three in the first sentence. And in paragraph four, the closing was just sort of reworked.
Yeah, we got some feedback from Chris Stanley that he suggested some language changes, not necessarily the content of the request, just in some of the approach that from his vantage point would foster probably better reception from the letter with those changes being made.
Okay, so we just have to sign off on it and?
Yep. The Board had already authorized the letter. We just didn't want to make those changes without running it by you, getting a thumbs up, and then we can move forward.
Any concerns, commissioners, on the new draft? I don't see anything that concerns me. That's good.
Commissioner Mejia raised her hand.
Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you, and I don't have any concerns, but I had, I sent the email early this morning to Amy about, I would also want this to be routed by Deborah Emengia just because we got the notification last week about no further operational funds being requested and this kind of falls into that and so I kind of want to see how we can approach this, you know, and, and be effective.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Well, I'm sure it's run by Deb.
Okay. Anything else on this item? Any other commissioner items? I had fun planting trees with all you fine folks. Yes, that was a good time.
The only other item, just to mention, would probably have come from Commissioner Klaus if she were here, but tonight the Regional Housing Council will be discussing the governance portion of their, it's a strategic plan that they're working on.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, and I believe Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings will be participating as well as Public Health Staff Tom Webster. So we just wanted to flag that, that's an important conversation. Things that we as staff have heard as a priority of the Board is to continue to look at how the Regional Housing Council is allocating funding in an environment where funding has been constricted and where Commerce has also indicated in the letter about BHI that they may take money from the other projects and that we have that one-year window. So those are the things that staff will be communicating as a priority from what we've heard from the Board, that that plan on how to utilize limited resources and to address the current projects and how we would support or not support projects if funding were to shift. So as a reminder, the letter from the Department of Commerce was pretty clear that they were only going to give us this year to fund at the current level and that in a future year, things would change significantly.
I, I think that is an important discussion. It's one that I want to, I, I, I don't know. How do we make sure it's not happening siloed out, right? And that, you know, the mayors, the chair, the Board are all having an opportunity in like a discussion about what that structure would look like and not, you know, a siloed discussion where one interest group is like pre-baking a cake.
I think it'd be great to, which I'm sure she will, as she has been giving some very detailed updates after this session, I'm sure Commissioner Klaus will update the Board in our Boards and Commission updates. And then we can also have Tom Webster come forward and we can do a work session where we talk about the details of what's taking place in Regional Housing Council. I think that at that point, it would be good to get direction to the county manager about what we wanted to take back as a formal message, but it would be premature to do that without Commissioner Klaus's input and without having the session.
Okay. Other commissioner items? All right, so we'll be back in session 2:00 PM for our business meeting. We have a bunch of public hearings, so word your.